Call a meeting in order, we'll start with the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number three, approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Number four, public forum. Number five, presentation. Number six, consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to look over the consent agenda? Any discussion or questions? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Financials, number seven, 7.1, review of budget year-to-date.
This is the budget year-to-date as of November 20th, 2023. We are currently at 28 percent. Last year, 34 percent. Did a few minor budget transfers. Other than that, that's about it.
That's pretty good. Normally, we're closer to the previous year.
Save some money.
Very good.
That doesn't mean nothing.
You can only do that if you want to.
Let us have a check.
It's not a problem.
7.2, approved treasurer's report for October.
Treasurer's report, our current cash balance, $9.2 million. Last year, at this time, $9.1 million. So that's good. We're getting good interest rates on our CDs, so that's good.
Any questions for Jackie on the treasurer's report for October? Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for October?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 7.3, approve 2023 A-bonds for treasurer's report for October.
So this is your basically your bank reconciliation report for the additional bond money? And the only activity that was interest income, the $12,000? We haven't had any expenses yet.
We have an invoice that TSP has presented. Since there were some schematic design things that we're still working through, we've held off on that, but I think we're now to a point where we're ready to present that. Probably come to you next month.
Any other questions on the 2023 A-bonds for treasurer's report for October? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the 2023 A-bonds treasurer's report for October. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 7 point, passes. 7.4, approve regular bills for November. Everybody had a chance to take a look at the regular bills? See anything that stands out? Can I get a motion to approve the regular bills for November?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pay the bills for November. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 7.5, approve high school activity bills for November. Any questions on the high school activity bills? Can I get a motion to approve the high school activity bills for November?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the high school activity bills for November. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, board forum information, 8.1, board reports and updates. We're having some committee meetings.
We did a policy meeting. We discussed quite a few of the policies that are on the agenda for tonight. We went through the release of students, you know, at sporting events and kind of changed that so that there's a going to and then coming home. So there's two different forms. And Rick was supposed to have those on the website. I don't know if they've, I guess I haven't looked yet.
They're not on there yet?
Not yet.
Wait till the final approval first.
Oh, I suppose, yeah.
Is that the main?
Yeah, well, yeah, then that, the other thing is that like they have a sheet that the parents have to sign and give to the coach like the night of.
Oh, yeah.
Like, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just so we know that the parent is actually who's picking them up.
Do they still have the online? Like if you were to do it the day before?
Yep, yep, it's still online.
But you still, you still have to sign something from the coach. Just because they're having problems with the coach not seeing the parent and not knowing where the kids are.
For sure that the kids, I get it.
Yes. And so they'll have, it sounded like to me they would have those forms and you could just sign off.
That's a personal liability form.
Yes, it's a personal liability form.
They are not online yet. Our website's going to change over on Wednesday, so hoping to get them on there and hopefully the app.
But yeah, I think that was only.
He thought either like the coach would have some on hand because you know, you just never know when a parent is going to be like, well, they got to come home with me tonight or something happens or whatever. And then otherwise, you can print them off yourself and then just hand them to the coach right away.
Yep.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think it was just language dates and
Yeah.
Things like that, yeah. I think it was it.
Negotiations met. We met with Clint and discussed Clint's interest in sticking around and then we went into So you've seen that in the, on the, on the agenda further down. So the negotiation committee is bringing that forward tonight, which you saw in your board packet. Did we meet another time too? In this time period?
We did afterwards, talked about negotiations.
Just preparing, yeah, just with Jackie, just some numbers, what the state gave us, where we, where we kind of sit in preparation for each meeting with the teacher group. Was there any other committee meetings? Just the two?
We have facilities committee meeting that's scheduled next week, I believe.
December 13th.
Okay, so yeah, a little ways out yet then, yeah. Talk about some, a couple of different things going on with. Then we do have our workshop meeting.
Coming up.
That we're going to have coming up, yeah.
Anybody else have anything for the board forum information? Okay, move on to administrators' report, number nine. 9.1, superintendent's board report.
All right, board members, you're going to see that we have submitted written reports. This is going to be part of our cadence that we'll be into, so those are attached, they came attached, mine did at least later today, but principals were earlier. So you can see that this gives us an opportunity to then again, a part of the transparency, communicating with you, but also our public who can access these reports and see what's going on. So just a few things to highlight, construction, continuing to work through some of the design. There's been some soil borrowings that have been collected. And like I was saying, some of the schematic design work, still a little bit to work through in terms of facilitating the movement of the industrial tech down from second floor and how that all fits without displacing an ag teacher. So that, and that's going to be really the premise of our workshop meeting, to talk through that a little bit. And I think that'll be good discussion by the board. We'll have both TSP as well as Krause Anderson present for that workshop meeting, so it should be a good discussion. Facility Subcommittee, as we talked about, MREA was a great conference. Brad didn't mention that earlier, but he did attend as a school board rep. And then Ms. Morvitz and Mr. Huesman did as well. And I thought it was just, it's a fantastic conference because you have a blend of administrators, school board members, and teachers that attend. And heard a lot about the upcoming, the political environment and legislative session coming forward, some speculation there may be a supplementary bond bill or supplemental spending bill beyond the bonding bill because this year's a bonding year for the state. So we'll see what happens with that. Part of the speculation was moving the starting teacher pay to $60,000 a year. How we get there is a big pile of money, and I don't know how that happens, but that is something that MREA, through all the input that they've received, is going to advocate for. So we'll see where that goes, but again, that's one of those things that was very informational and I thought it was a really good conference. Our team did some visits to a few different facilities in the community because we had identified a reunification site and we think that that's going to have to move and part of our safety plan. Obviously, we're not going to broadcast where those reunification sites are right now, but we are going to possibly have to make some changes to our safety plan that, that the board had approved a couple of months ago, just to update our reunification process and plans. We're working on some holiday celebration, we're working on that yet. We have a couple of vendors that have come forward with a little bit of money to support that opportunity, so we'll see if that comes together. Certainly, all the board members will be encouraged and invited to attend if we are able to hold our Christmas party. And then there is an attachment, and I thought it was just kind of interesting to share some information from the University of Minnesota. If you haven't had a chance to review it, I'd encourage you to do so. On page two of that report, it highlights that we had 59 course registrations by 43 students from Pipestone Area Schools for a total of 211 University of Minnesota credits. And the vast majority of those were B or higher in terms of grade attainment. So I think that speaks volumes to, to our students and the preparation that they're getting here at Pipestone Area Schools to be successful. And those are the things that don't always show up in a test score, but I think it's a real testament because that's, that's the real test, is how do you do when you get into those post-secondary enrollment opportunities? So just a few things that I wanted to highlight there.
Well, it not only saves them money in the long run, but it also puts them way further ahead of other people going into college. Because like my daughter can go in almost as a sophomore.
It's amazing.
So I mean, you're, it's huge. It's a huge opportunity for those kids to get ahead of, you know, and jumpstart on their college education.
Yeah, it's a great program, so something we can be very excited about and proud of for, for our kids.
Is that all you got?
That's all I got.
Very good. Yeah, I forgot the MREA conference up in Brainerd that I attended. I've been to MSBA as well, up in the cities, and that conference up in, up in Brainerd. Really relevant topics, not only for administration, teachers, you know, in schools, but I felt a lot of it I could take away from my own job. You know, a lot of climate, culture, just team building type topics. So I would, if any of you ever get, you know, like these coming years, if, if you can, I thought it was pretty good. Moving on, 9.2, principals' board report.
Good evening. The veterans program, Veterans Day program that we had went very well. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for it and neither were these four. We were up in Brainerd. Great staff and student support, members of the community as well were in attendance. Excuse me, we want to thank everyone for all their hard work. The many staff members, really spearheaded and headed by Ingrid Wielenberg, to the student helpers, the band, the choir, the American Legion, and the list goes on and on. I don't want to forget anybody, but we especially want to recognize and thank the many veterans in our community who stepped up to volunteer for this great program, but who also answered the call of duty and served to protect this great country of ours. And we really appreciate that and want to thank them. The second quarter of the first semester started off with little to no issues. You went over colleges and schools. Middle, high school students participated in the Grateful Tree, which over the weekend it fell down. But it was, it was out in the hall and we had students were given these two leaves. Amazon didn't get us all the leaves on time, so we're going to be doing something for Christmas with the other students, but they were given two leaves. One, they wrote on there what they were thankful for and then went out and stuck it on the tree. And the other one was to someone in the school, whether that be a former teacher, current teacher, librarian, fellow student, whomever that might be, that they are thankful for and why, and to get that to the student. And I was in the mailroom when some staff members got theirs, it really made their day. And quite a few kids stopped out in the hall to, to read the tree. And it was pretty neat, the things that they were thankful for. Let's see, we'll be doing something similar for Christmas with students who are unable to participate in the Grateful Tree. We'll blame Amazon again, but also coming up, the Pipestone Area Youth Survey. That'll be taken by middle and high school students. I made the decision not to include sixth grade. I felt they were a little bit too young for, to talk about alcohol, tobacco, vaping. So it'll be grade seven through 12. I talked to the coordinator and insisted that a letter be sent home to all parents who are, that have students participating because I didn't just want it to, them to come home and be like, yeah, I took the survey about these things. I wanted them to be able to physically know. And that's, that's from the coalition, explaining that their child will be participating in a survey about some sensitive issues and that they're able to opt out if they so desire. And I put in my notes that I have a copy with me if you'd like to see it, but I gave it to Kathy, my wonderful administrative assistant, to file, and I don't know where she filed it at. So if you want one, I can, I'll be happy to get you one tomorrow. I looked. And that's it for middle and high school.
Good evening. November is packed full of stuff. We had the end of the first quarter on the Thursday, the ninth. We had all grades in progress reports from our SED title and that sort of stuff was sent home on the 22nd. Every quarter, we have an On Target Arrow Parade where we are demonstrating the, the three big things, respectful, responsible, and being engaged. So teachers select two students from every classroom and they get to be paraded around. So I made sashes for the kids, it says On Target Arrow. They line up and they go through each flex area and the kids are standing in the hallway clapping and cheering them on. What a, what a cool thing. You can just see the pride in these students and what they take with that, which is really cool. So we had that On Target Arrow Parade. With that, we celebrate the whole school. So I got to do a little dance party with every class, which was a lot of fun. So we had, they had fruit snacks and then we danced for the next 15 minutes. And that is so much fun to see the kids celebrating each other and having a great time. And we had some fun dances that we were doing, so. The fourth graders put on a concert, a Veterans Day concert. What a beautiful tribute to our veterans. Wonderful music, it was great. We had staff in-service on Friday, November 10th. For us here at the elementary, we had live letters training for Unit Five in the morning, and then it was a staff workday for our staff in the afternoon to work on grades and stuff. Our paraprofessionals, they had a mod podge of things that they had to do. I had a staff meeting with them, they had some infotech training stuff, and some of them had to do a para protest that they had to take. There was an all-school Veterans Day program, like Mr. Huesman said, that went really well. I had mandated reporter training for my certified staff and then my paraprofessionals. As you know, we're all mandated reporters, so just understanding what does that mean? How do you go about reporting it and all of that information? And then last but not least, Lisa Pease has accepted just being our DAC person since we haven't filled Melanie's position right now. So she'll be in charge of all of the assessment that's coming up here within our district. Any questions?
One. How, how's letters training been going?
Really well.
Still, because you know, last year, it ever sounded like it was going really well, still.
It is still going really well, yes.
Still applying?
Yes, yep. And I'm excited because part of the READ Act is having letters training, and I feel like our district is way ahead of the game since we started it last year. So all of our staff, except for a couple of them who've kind of moved positions or whatever, will all be letters certified training by the end of the school year.
Awesome.
Which is pretty incredible.
I do, sorry, I do want to say also that through Jennifer Dunn, we were able to get some CPI training here for more staff members on campus instead of sending them all the way to Redwood Falls. And so that, that's just a huge help. And also, I want to convey the staff's gratefulness to the professional development day that you gave them on November 10th, that Friday, that they're like, we've never had this before. This is awesome, this helps us tremendously. So when you're doing the calendar, if you want to remember that, it made the staff very happy.
Any questions for Jennifer or Todd? Thank you. Moving on, number 10, discussion items. Felt like we already covered it in the board information portion, but do we have any discussion items? No, we're good?
Taking up that Melanie's old position, so we can't hire within for the
No, for the community ed, no. We originally thought we could, but it's essentially putting a fence around our district boundary and saying how many people live within that, it's not by the city proper.
Okay.
And because, and we've spent some time on the phone talking to the Board of School Administrators about that, because the law as it reads is almost contradictory in that regard, but ultimately, so for our Starz reporter, they'll name me as the community ed, but we do have to have a licensed, fully licensed, community ed director.
Okay, we good? Moving on, 11, board action. 11.1, resolution accepting donations. We had $1,876.96 from Colburn's for the Elementary, High School, Middle School Help Fund. We had $1,345 from Pipestone Publishing for the Athletic Help Fund. We had $79.65 from First Lutheran Church for the Wellness Room. And we had $100 from Christ the King Lutheran Church for the Wellness Room. I'd like to thank all these organizations for the donations given to the district. Can I get a motion to, to accept these donations?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 11.2, approve surplus elementary reading anthologies. Any information in there?
There is an email attached, and as you see, that these are little readers to be discarded, and so they do need to be declared as such, and they don't necessarily fit with the curriculum that's being brought in with the READ Act and with the letters training in particular. I don't know, Jen, if you had anything more you wanted to add, but.
It's our old, our Journeys curriculum that we have right now, and we'll be going to a new curriculum with the READ Act and everything. So instead of throwing these books away, they're going to students and the kids are being taken home, so they have reading.
That was the whole premise of moving it now, so that we could get them in kids' hands.
Instead of having a whole bunch of books to throw away at the end of the school year, they're getting through them, as they are reading through them, they're just sending them home to students.
Perfect. Can I get a motion to approve surplus elementary reading anthologies?
So moved.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 11.3, approve policies. 421, gifts to employees and school board. 427, workloads for certain special education teachers. 518, DNR, DNI orders. 610, field trips. 904, distribution of materials on school, district property by non-school persons. We already brought up a few of these during the discussion portion. Is there anything else, Clint? Just verbiage changes?
Yeah, pretty minimal changes. I believe we put a disclosure as well into the distribution materials. We talked about that, that if it's, materials are distributed, that it is not a reflection of the Pipestone Area Schools. But otherwise, I think everything else was covered earlier that we talked about.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve these policies?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody loves policy.
Chrissy and Daphne.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. 11.4, approve e-learning plan.
Don't want me to comment right away, all right? Sounds good. So you see, board members, the e-learning plan that's presented, we do reference e-learning in our teacher-master agreement. So the plan is set up, and you'll notice, as I understand, the previous plan had e-learning slash virtual days. We removed any reference to virtual days. I understand that that was a little bit of a discussion point last year. And so by law, it only states e-learning days, it doesn't state anything about virtual days. So what you see is the plan that was created with input from staff, both Mr. Huesman and Ms. Morvitz took it to their leadership teams, vetted it through, and that was in conjunction or in accordance to state statute, which says that we have to, had to get teacher input. So that was part of that process. And then we went through the plan, vetted it. We had a couple other administrators besides the two principals weigh in on this, and what you see before you lays out really how we would envision the e-learning plan being executed going forward. And it lays it out by program level for pre-K1 and then grades two through 12, and just lays out the expectations, not just for the, for the staff, but also for the learners. So plan is presented with a recommendation for approval.
How, how many e-learning days did we, do we have last year?
We had five.
I know there were five e-learning days, but then there were some virtual days too.
Yeah. Two or three. Yeah, something like that, but they didn't actually like count as a school day, right?
We had to forgive them, didn't we?
Yeah.
At the end of the year?
Yeah.
They were going to make them go later, and we just forgave the days so they didn't have to go later.
I think you're only allowed five.
You are, by statute.
Yeah.
Five. And so on a snow day, are the e-learning days used up first? And then?
I, I think it, I think in the past, and I'll comment, I think in the past, it was all based on the weather report and if we could be prepared so that everybody could have what they need at home to do the snow, the virtual.
Sure.
Otherwise.
They didn't do more than what, two in a row? Then they just did a snow day because it was hard to do.
Yeah, I think.
The planning and preparation for the teachers. I had a total correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And after that, they just announced a snow day because it's hard to.
So we would like to just use them all, hoping that five would be enough, but.
Yes, my, my mind actually goes the other way and says, well, let's, let's use e-learning days as a last resort, just from seeing what happens with trying to learn over a computer doesn't really work. You know, and so calling it a snow day and having to make it up, well, once you start running, or well, actually, you start using those holidays or those set aside holidays or.
Snow makeup days.
Yeah.
We had a couple of them, and then we started running into trouble there. We had a big.
We ran into some trouble.
They didn't want to use that day because it was.
It was like over Easter or something.
Because it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't designated as snow makeup. Yeah, because it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't designated as snow makeup.
Something like that.
Yep.
Yes, I was just wondering if we're, if we're able to make, make a, not a policy or a rule, but kind of say, hey, let's, let's utilize those makeup days before we go to e-learning days.
Do you think e-learning days are not as productive then? Is that what you're kind of thinking about there?
I mean, I would agree. They're probably not as productive, but I think you're going to have a lot of, I don't know, staff that aren't going to be happy if you're making them make up snow days when they could be doing the e-learning days. That's just my.
Those stretches can get kind of long.
Yeah.
The second, especially the second part of the year.
Mm-hmm.
There's not a lot of breaks.
I kind of agree with Tyler. I mean, we put the snow makeup days in there for a reason. We should be using them if we can.
So you're saying use the snow makeup days first and then the e-learning days?
Yeah.
Is that how you're?
If the hard part is, is the snow makeup days kind of come, you only use them as they come.
Right.
What do you, what do we have, two in there now?
Kind of like if you're past that point, you haven't used any.
Yeah, if you, yeah. But if you go past them, I'm saying you can't really go back.
But eventually, like December, there might be one and, you know, so you start going past them.
Then.
Like President's Day, if you get a bunch, every year or whatever.
And then it's gone.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd rather use the ones like during like the school calendar year than add to the end.
Well, I would too.
If we have like a snow day in December, if there's a day in January that we can make it up, I say, let's make it up in January. You know, because I, well, I think it was last year, like we had a snow makeup day. We were supposed to have school that day and it turned crappy. So then it was.
Makeup day for the makeup day.
I mean, you kind of got a.
Last year was tough.
Last year was really tough. Like that was just crazy, but.
It'd be nice to have a good plan ahead and all those.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I think if there's like a day that we can use as a snow makeup day, I agree that we should be using it.
Yeah.
As long as you have them.
As long as we have it accessible.
Yep.
Is there discussion not for it or?
I think all, all decisions need to be based on what is best for our children.
Exactly.
That is what the decision.
Well, I, I think it's fair to say like Tyler says, that it's way easier to learn in.
Well, being in front of the teachers more.
Because everybody has different capabilities if mom and dad are not there to help and force.
Right, exactly.
So I would agree with that. That's, I guess I'll go with Tyler on that. If we have them days, I think we need to use them first. Is that what you're saying, Tyler?
Yeah, setting a priority of, yeah, if we have makeup days, let's use those first. If we're out of makeup days, let's fall back to our e-learning days. Last thing anybody wants to do is go five more days after school.
No, I don't think anybody does that.
No one wants to do that.
Good comment. I never thought of it. I mean, I, you do, but you.
It's good clarification.
I had, I had just read something before going through this agenda here the other day about, yeah, just the, the stark difference of, boy, when kids are trying to learn online, I think we all learn through COVID. That, that didn't work.
I think it did for some, not for the others. If you had a.
Well, yeah, great majority of them.
My son did it very well, but he had his mother standing there with him thumb over. Some kids don't have that opportunity and that's a different thing.
And I do think that's all, the COVID situation is a whole different topic than an e-learning day.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking one day out of a week versus all three months or whatever. I mean, I don't even remember how long it was, but it was a long time.
It was a long time.
You know, so that is two different, to me, two different things too.
Every kid's going to respond different to it either.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what we're, I mean, I want to make sure that the staff, so the night before, you're telling them to send, are we? I mean, I don't want them preparing for an e-learning day and then not having an e-learning day. I mean, how do you feel about that? Because that staff's prepared for it.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, it's a preparation thing.
It is a preparation thing.
So I mean, to me, if I prepare all this stuff that I have to send out and get, you know, I want to know for sure if I have to do it or not.
But I think at first year, you're going to just have these makeup days here for the first little while. You wouldn't even be considered an e-learning day, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying though. We're discussing it. Are we deciding this is what we're doing or we're just discussing it? That's two different things is what I.
Well, I think right now it's pretty much discretion of administration. I don't think there is a policy for.
There, there isn't. And what we could do is add in a modification or a statement underneath the e-learning days in the heading in the event of that PSA, PAS, excuse me, has a school cancellation due to severe weather. Grades pre-K through twelve may utilize an e-learning day after the exhaustion of snow makeup days built in, already built into the calendar. That, that's what I would see as a modification to what you see in front of you. Then, then that would establish the question that you want answered, that it's very clearly.
Yeah, I lay down the plan and then you do a snow makeup day.
My, that's, my suggestion is, let's take this back to the policy committee. Have them, have them work through it and then bring it back to the board for approval. That's my, that's my suggestion.
Is it a policy though?
Well, it'd be a change of.
I think you'd have to work it into this.
You'd have to work it into this.
But this isn't technically a policy, is it?
It's not a school board policy, but it is a, it's, it's a policy-driven action because it's in the master agreement. So I guess what I would suggest is have a motion and a second to postpone action on this to a future.
To table it?
Nope, postpone.
Just postpone.
Because otherwise, if you table it, then you have to take a motion to take it off the table.
Okay.
Or if you just postpone it, you're postponing it.
Keep talking. She's looking here.
Well, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven during the school year if we don't add on days at the end.
Of snow makeup days built in already.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, fair enough.
So there's a week and a half.
Yeah.
In a normal year.
What's after, what's after Jan, what's after January?
How many are after January?
There's one, there's one in December.
And then the rest of them are?
There's one in January, one in February, two in March, and two in April.
So it's spread out a little bit.
Uh-huh.
Like your February nineteenth, I'm just throwing that out there, that's President's Day in old school, which is also a snow makeup day. Now that's a holiday for staff. So you will be paying staff, that was my question, one and a half, two and a half times their wage to do that.
Yeah.
You know.
Good point.
So then that, that makes six then.
I think.
I think we should take it back.
Yep, it's a good point.
Sitting here, we could say.
We're counting that there.
They are. I mean, if we do have school, they get compensated. I think it's.
Yeah, it costs the district.
Time and then time and a half. So.
I entertain a motion to postpone this and let's, let's have the policy committee and some staff in the room for discussion and then bring it back to the next, next month's meeting. Can I get a motion to postpone?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Eleven point five, approve superintendent contract for Dr. Willard. Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve the superintendent contract for Dr. Willard?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll just say thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for the feedback so far.
Yeah, I was doing a decent job.
Eleven point six, adopt the 2024-2025 budget planning timeline.
Yeah, I'll comment on this. Again, we went through this with a fine tooth comb and spent a lot of time reviewing the cadence and the sequence. You may have recalled seeing a similar document that was presented last year to the board. We resequenced some things, reordered some things. And, and again, had the principals, Jackie weighed in on this. Jen Dunn helped weigh in on it because there are some certain statutory dates that you really have to be fixated on, particularly when it comes to non-tenured staff who may be non-renewed. And that, that becomes a pretty bright line that we want to work from. So you'll notice that that's referenced in the March meeting. There's actions that occur prior to that in March. And then in May, ultimately, we make our final preparation of the budget and then the board adopts the final budget in June of 2024. There's a lot of work that goes on, particularly in the month of March, when you look at gathering input from staff on the budget, presenting a preliminary budget to the, to the staff as a whole, gathering input, sharing with the board. And I'll just share as a superintendent, that's always the, the challenge that you have. Does the staff find out or does the board find out first in terms of the budget presentation and what's going on? If staff members are directly impacted by a budget decision or a recommendation that's coming forward, that individual staff member would be talked to and discuss that, hey, we may be having to adjust our budget. And we know that there, there may very well be some discussions around that because of the ESSR funding that we know is running out. So we're, we're very cognizant of that. That certainly would happen prior to any large group presentation of the staff. But in March is when we would do a large group presentation of the entire staff, giving them an update on where we're at with our projected revenues and expenditures and what we might need to do relative to our budget as a whole. So that's the timeline that we've created and have presented for board consideration and approval this evening to really lay out our process map on how we go about adopting our budget.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to adopt the 2024-2025 budget planning timeline?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Eleven point seven, approve combined summary of the 2022-2023 World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Report.
We're not cued for a presentation of this per se, so I'll just ask you to open up your attachment that you have on your screen, board members, and I'll just walk through this relatively quickly. This is a requirement. By December 15th, we have to submit to the state a report on our world's best workforce as well as our achievement and integration plan. And what I'll just do is walk through this and, and share, I would have had this up earlier, but there were certain pieces of data that we were still getting to the table. So that's why it was added to the board agenda late and I do apologize for that. But again, we wanted to make certain that we had all the right information available. So just so you know the layout of the slides, the world's best workforce is a statutory requirement that we have to adhere to. And then the achievement and integration, the ANI, is the partnership that we have with the Edgerton School District. And that's where we have our math interventionist and that funding that comes from. The achievement integration helps offset those expenditures that we have there. The world's best workforce doesn't require any additional expenditures. It's more reporting on work that we're already doing relative to the goals that are established. So what you see on each of the slides, on the left-hand side is the goal statement that we have as a district that's related to the world's best workforce, our results, and then the status for each of the, each of the different goals. So the first goal is all students are kindergarten-ready. Very difficult metric to have, but what you see in front of you is an early reading screener that we have and an early math screener that we utilize. And you can see where we are relative to that. We did have a dip in our percentage of low risk, which is, is a positive thing because we want lower, low risk. And then seventy-seven percent low risk, which was very close, this is in the early math, to the seventy-six percent that was in the previous year. So making good progress there in terms of that one. All students in the third grade achieving grade-level literacy, so the goal for the world's best workforce. All students read at grade level by third grade. And again, you can see some percentages there. Fifty-one point eight percent of our third-grade students were proficient on the 2023 spring MCA reading tests. And then twenty-one, and we disaggregate this, this one down, twenty-one point four percent of our EL, our ML, third-grade students were proficient. Saw some improvements there, which is positive. As we know, for non-English speakers coming new to America, they have a twofold challenge in some regards. Sometimes they may not have literacy in their own native language. So there's that challenge to overcome. And then also, research tells us that it's about seven years to acquire a new language. And for any of us that may have studied a foreign language, we know that that is indeed to be true. So pleased to see the twenty-one point four percent there. Closing achievement gaps, closing achievement gap for identified student groups. And our district plan has identified our free and reduced lunch students. And comparing those to our non-free and reduced lunch, you can see that we've made some gains there. And then the EL students, we have, again, some work to do there. Eight point one percent proficient compared to forty-seven point two percent non-EL student proficiency. So, so that's a pretty, pretty significant gap, driven predominantly, again, by just the skill development and reading in particular. And then math, you can see the free and reduced lunch student group, twenty-two point three percent proficient compared to forty-seven percent proficient of non-free and reduced lunch. And EL students, eight point three compared to thirty-eight point three percent. So this is a goal that, that needs some work. Closing the achievement gap is, is a challenge all over. And so again, something that, that we're continuing to work on. College and career readiness by graduation. You can see that sixty-nine percent of our 2021 graduates were enrolled in institution of higher learning compared to sixty-two percent in 20 and seventy percent. So certainly down a little bit from 2019, but I'm encouraged to see the sixty-nine percent coming out of the heels of COVID and everything that happened there, given our earlier discussion. Eleven percent of our 21 graduates in the free and reduced lunch student group, that was a pretty significant drop. We had thirty-eight percent in 2020. So some work to do there. Forty-two percent of the graduates participate in rigorous courses. Previously, it had been seventy-three percent. So again, just needing to continue to push that and promote that. And I will give credit to Mr. Huesman in this area. One of the things that he has done, particularly around college and career-ready, just to build awareness, is having a jeans day where staff can wear jeans, but then they wear some attire, whether it's from a, a post-secondary institution or a military organization, and have a meaningful conversation with kids about why they're wearing that particular piece of clothing that day. And as he and I were visiting about that, that's a hundred percent more conversations about post-secondary enrollment and career opportunities than what was happening before. So a small thing that can be done very symbolically to project college and career readiness. All students graduating on time, this is one that is, is always a challenge. And I say that not because we don't have kids that are working hard in school. We find that we have kids that may fall behind in their grade, uh, grade attainment, so they aren't on track to graduate. So eighty-four percent falls not too far outside the parameters that you would expect compared to the eighty-seven percent before. But again, something that we need to keep working on. And I think just what I described is, is an effort to do that. We had nine point three percent of our kids drop out. Certainly something that we want to keep working on as well because in today's knowledge-based economy, that's, that's absolutely critical that you have that high school diploma. I know Brad tells a great story about how important that is. So the next piece, achievement and integration. Different strategies here. One is, the first strategy is the mass specialist. And this is the first year of the three-year plan. The board had approved a three-year plan last, I believe, last spring. So now we're starting to report on that plan of action. So what you see are target numbers. Those were established in the plan that was previously approved by the board. And then reporting our actual results of where we're actually at. And as you see, the indicator for students in free and reduced lunch group increased. Our target was thirty percent. We were at thirty-two point two, so that's positive. The winter screening, not as high as we had wanted. Twenty-five percent was our target. Nineteen point one percent is where we're at. Perceptions of co-teaching in the mass specialist area. Perceptions of co-teaching in the math specialist area, phenomenal results. Seventy-eight point three percent positive feedback. And then there's training that's going on through the new teacher center and they're called high-leverage tools that are utilized to help provide instruction. And they're called high-leverage because they're research-based and been proven to make a significant difference. Our target was ten high-leverage tools in the classroom. We actually had eleven that were utilized. So that's, that's positive and continuing to hope and expect to see those go. The next one, math interventionist is our strategy two under goal one. And again, see some duplicate data there. The thing that I would point out, number of students who need to receive support from the math interventionist will decrease due to more student gains. We were at sixty percent, actually eighteen percent utilize that. So that's an area that we need to see more involvement, do a little better job of collecting data around. Positive perceptions from students, that was very good, eighty percent positive perceptions. And perceptions, positive perceptions from teachers of students who have received intervention support. Our target was twenty-five and we were at forty percent. So again, some very good data there. And then goal two, strategy one, analyzing student learning tool, a little different goal, different strategy. And this gets into, again, some duplicated data. But then you get into the increased successful completion of ASL with tenured, non-tenured math instructors. That's a training that goes, that's part of the mentoring work that goes on. Our goal was ten teachers. We actually had three teachers. So some opportunities there to do more training and support. And then increased use of new teacher center coaching, high-leverage tools, like I said before. And I think that's just a really important metric to keep our eyes on because those tools make a difference. And then the cross-district math integration programs, this is really emphasizing the collaboration with Edgerton. And again, a couple of duplicative, duplicative metrics there. And then the number of students and student group types from Pipestone who participated in cross-district math integration programs. Ninety-six students from Pipestone area schools participated in four different student groups. And then increase in student level of comfort with initiating and maintaining social relationships. Our target was thirty-five percent and our result was actually eighty percent based upon our collection tools. So those were very positive. So we have, we have some pretty good data here, some pretty good indicators that I felt really positive about. I would say that an area that we need to work on is our, is our graduation rates, particularly along those free-reduced lunch lines and our English language learner lines. But beyond that, I think there are several things that are very positive indicators for the results of our district.
Well, and I, I think the teacher, the positivity of the teachers and the students, like recognizing that it's, it's something that's good is only gonna help all of the goals. And that's, that's huge, that they're so, they're such a big increase.
Well, and that fosters that culture.
Right, right. It's very good.
Any questions for Clint? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. Number twelve, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. We're adjourned.